Okay, welcome everyone. It's 10:02 and we're going to call this committee the whole meeting to order. We do have a quorum of council members present. And we are going to begin with council announcements. Does any member of the committee have announcements to make? I see, okay, councillor Tree, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, to all the audience here and all the residents. On this Saturday, I'm going to hosting a food drive bank, food drive, sorry, food drive donations at two locations. One is the Agamius Community Center and otherwise my Carnegie Community Center as well. So they are from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM. I hope everyone in the workforce is come here if you have time. Also regarding the Neighborhood Watch Program in our workforce, we finished the Westbrook Community and also Jefferson Community around the 13th Street has been qualified for this program as initially I'm going to engage with VRP, these officers to validate all those findings and assess them as well. And in 2024, I'm going to move this neighborhood watch program to the Mill Pond Community as well. That's my statement. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you councillor. The next announcement is from Ward 6 councillor Michael Shu.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'll be hosting a civic education section named Young Mayor Workshop this Saturday afternoon. Welcome all age groups to join us, targeting teenagers aged 13 to 18, from grade 9 to grade 12. It's my honor to have Mayor West as our keynote speaker, who will deliver a presentation on the roles of the council and the government, how we work together to make the city better. And also, we have an introductions to various council committees and also the differences between the York Regional Government and the City of Richmond Hill. And also, we have an interactive section like a mock council meeting and also a tour on the first floor on in this building. And the objective of this workshop is to have the public to gain better understanding of our work. So whether you are a parent or whether you are a teenager, just feel free to join us this Saturday afternoon from 2:00 to 5:00 in this council chambers and look forward to seeing you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is councillor Scott Thompson.
Thank you very much. Just like to thank everybody who came out to my event on Friday, this past Friday evening in support of the Richmond Hill Community Food Bank. We had a skating event over at the National Training Rinks. It was well attended. I don't know exactly how many pounds of donations we received for the food bank, but for those of you who have not had a chance to donate to the Richmond Hill Community Food Bank, certainly go to their website. You can, if you aren't able to donate with a product, by all means, you can make a financial donation. They could certainly help stock those shelves. I'd like to thank the mayor for coming out and setting the radar shot speed for the event on Friday night. I won't go over what that speed was, but there was a lot of people who did actually surpass that that speed. But, but thank you again for being a trooper and being there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Next is Ward 5 councillor Karen Silvitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everybody. At all these wonderful smiling faces, it's Bring Your Kids to Work Day. We've got some wonderful children here, together with their staff, moms and dads. So welcome. It's wonderful to see you here. We hope you have a wonderful day and hope everybody had a good Halloween last night. Just one announcement that I have to make in the spirit of giving and our food bank. On Saturday, November the 4th as well, we can have a very busy Saturday in the city. We have a food drive, which is for the Community Food Bank, which is sponsored by MARA, which is the Maybourne Area Residents Association. We actually have our Chair of MARA right sitting up there, Pat Pollock. Say hi, everybody. And so they have done this, MARA has done this many times and it's very successful. So if you want any further information today, Pat's right there or else please contact my office. So it's from 9:00, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And the food drive truck will be parked on Maybourne Avenue between Drummerne and Sanderson. So it's sort of, it will be a central truck and you can come and you can give donations of money. You can also give donations of food. And thank you, everybody, in advance for your, for your holiday generosity. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Silvitz. And the last announcement is from our Ward 1 councillor, Carol Davidson.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind folks that the Break the Silence, Step in My Shoes Walk on behalf of Yellow Brick House that supports victims of domestic violence, we're walking this Sunday at 10:00 AM, November 5th, starting at St Andrews College, which is on Young 15800 Young Street. And if you can't make it, please check out my website or go to their website and offer support financially. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Okay, and well, I just, I just want to announce that I've been, I've been informed that Mayor West, though he wanted to be here today out of abundance of caution, he has a non-COVID illness that he doesn't want to risk spreading to anyone. So he is with us on, online. He's waving there and you know councillor Liu as well is joining us remotely. So we do have, in fact, all nine members of council present for this committee meeting. And it's, it's an exciting day. It's a great opportunity. We've got a number of grade 9 students here that, that as a result of Bring Your Kids to Work Day, they're, they're going to get a tour of what we do here at City Hall and it starts here in the council chambers and they get, they get to witness a committee of the whole meeting. And we're going to have a presentation to them shortly. Now, the next item on the agenda is introduction of emergency or time-sensitive matters. Does any member of committee have an emergency matter? Okay, so I need a, a motion then to adopt the agenda. Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Chan, seconded by councillor Michael Shu. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. So we have an agenda adopted. Do any members have a disclosure of pecuniary interest? I see none. Okay, we move to identify items requiring separate discussion. And the clerk has indicated those items that have either delegations or presentations that, that will be pulled out. Is there any additional items? Okay, councillor Thompson?
Yes, I'd like to pull 11.2, please.
11.2?
Yes, please.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor Chan?
Yes, I'd like to pull 11.6 regarding municipality significant event designation policy. Thank you.
11.6, okay. And councillor Silvitz?
A question through you, Mr. Chair, 11.1, is that automatically pulled or do we have, I have to pull it? 11.1, please.
Yes, that'll be discussed regardless.
Thank you.
Okay, and councillor Tree?
Mr. Chair, just want to confirm, 11.4, 11.5 already extracted, okay? I want 11.3 as well.
You want 11.3 also?
Yeah, 11.3.
Okay, I think that's just about everything, Mr. Clerk. We got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 pulled. Anything we can pass on, adopt on consent? Okay, so I need a motion for the staff recommendations to be adopted from items 11.7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. 12, 13, 14. Oh, well, the receipt of those correspondence in 12, 13, and 14. Anyone willing to move that motion? Thank you councillor Silvitz. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Again, carries unanimously. Okay. So we've adopted the remainder of the items. There are no public hearings and we move into presentation. So this, as I said before, we're going to start with a presentation from, from the members of council acknowledging Take Our Kids to Work Day. So everyone who's here participating, that can come on up to the podium, I think. That's what we'll do. Come on and come on up for a photo. I want to congratulate you all for, for being here today. And committee will remain in our seats and senior staff and we'll, we'll all have one nice big photo. Thanks very much for coming today. We hope you enjoy your day and I hope you, you learn a lot about what, what we do here at City Hall. Okay, I understand you have a busy schedule, so, so we'll let you, we'll let you go if you need to. You're welcome to leave at any time and I, I hope you enjoy learning about what your parents and your, your aunts or your uncle or your grandparents do here when they're working. Okay, so our next two presentations are regarding proposed official plan amendments. The first is a presentation by Chun Chu, our senior planner of policy regarding OPA 18.5. This is the Young and Carville 16th Area Key Development Area. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Today, I'll give an overview of OPA 18.5 regarding the Young and Carville or 16th Avenue Key Development Area, also known as the KDA. Next slide, please. This presentation will cover OPA 18.5, including its intent, the consultation process, and what we've heard. I'll also summarize the policy framework and the changes made to the OPA since the May draft, and we'll end with next steps and recommendations. Next slide, please. OPA 18.5 is one of the four area-specific amendments that form the batch two OPAs. The other three OPAs are for the Village Local Center, the New Kirk Local Center, and the Oak Ridge's Local Center. The intent of OPA 18.5 is to update Chapter 4 of the Official Plan, but providing more specific policies regarding the Young and Carville or 16th Avenue Key Development Area. In doing so, the OPA helps achieve the land use vision for the KDA and ensures that it conforms with provincial and regional policies. The OPA also satisfies the requirements for a secondary plan for the KDA by planning comprehensively for land use, built form, and public realm. Next slide, please. Before we talk about the OPA, let's take a step back and give a recap of the city structure. As you recall, the city structure was updated and approved by region, sorry, by the council in June 2022. It sets out where intensification is directed through a network of centers and corridors. And in keeping with provincial direction, the city is required to direct and accommodate growth within the city structure, and this includes the Young and Carville or 16th Avenue KDA. This center is also the second most intensified location in the city, following the Richmond Hill Center. The work on OPA 18.5 is also carrying out the key directions for the KDA as endorsed by council in February 2022. Next slide, please. Extensive public consultation for the center, for the four center-specific OPAs began in November 2022, with workshops that set the vision for each of the centers. We then held stakeholder meetings in March of 2023. The draft OPAs were shared with the public and prescribed bodies in May. Then in June, staff held a statutory open house and a public meeting. Staff also met with stakeholders and landowners over the summer and fall. For the KDA, staff met with the livable Richmond Hill Group, a local resident, and two major landowners. And so this brings us to today, where we're now recommending to council the adoption of OPA 18.5. Next slide, please. The city received numerous submissions about 18.5 from the general public, government agencies, and landowners. Overall, the feedback has generally been positive, with there being support for transit-oriented development and a desire for more retail and commercial amenities. However, the city did receive some mixed feedback on several themes, and more specifically, some felt that the height and densities are too high, while others wanted more than what was proposed in the May draft OPA. With respect to the public realm, we heard there is a need for an animated pedestrian realm and a desire for more connected parks and open space. Next slide, please. In terms of land uses, the OPA continues to permit a mixed and range of land uses as shown on this slide. To activate street frontage, the OPA requires retail, commercial, or community uses on the ground floor of buildings. Next slide, please. In terms of height and density, there are no changes to the height restrictions listed on the left-hand table on this slide. The minimum height of buildings continues to be three stories. The maximum street wall height along the Market Promenade is four stories, and the maximum base building height is six stories. What has changed from the May version of the OPA is the density distribution. If you look at the right-hand schedule, you'll notice that the northern quadrants have some densities redistributed towards Young Street and along 16th Avenue. Overall, there is a minor increase in density in the KDA, but cumulatively, the forecasted growth in the KDA can still be supported by the water and sewage capacity planned for this area. It is reminded that OPA 18.5 does not prescribe the maximum height of towers, but they are limited by the density allotted to the development blocks and by the application of the angular plane if the property abuts a neighborhood land use designation. Based on 3D modeling, the tallest buildings continue to be located at the intersection of Young Street and Carville or 16th Avenue with about 55 stories. Next slide, please. In terms of the public realm, OPA 18.5 proposes new parks, a multi-use trail, and a network of streets and cycling facilities that connect the four quadrants together. The OPA also connects the KDA with the David Dunlop Observatory Park through a bridge crossing. There are two changes made to the May version of the public realm schedule. Firstly, the East-West Street in the Southwest quadrant has been replaced with private interconnections that include pedestrian sidewalks. Secondly, the schedule and policies emphasize that the potential subway and its alignment, as well as the go-train station, are conceptual, and they are subjected to future studies and approvals by MetroLinks. Next slide, please. There are other changes made to the May draft OPA. Firstly, the Market Promenade is rerouted to zigzag along Young Street in order to safely cross at the signalized pedestrian crossing. Secondly, there is some flexibility added so that the city may, may determine which sides of a building is best suited for providing active street frontage. Flexibility is also added for the city to determine which sites are best suited for displaying public art. The OPA includes a new sidebar that explains how private interconnections may be required in addition to the public streets identified on the schedules. There are also other minor technical updates to the OPA that are not mentioned here, but they help to improve readability and provide greater clarity. Next slide, please. In terms of timing, we are near the end of the OPA process whereby council is considering OPAs 18.5 and 18.6 for adoption today. If the OPAs are adopted, staff will forward them to York Region for final approval. Staff will then begin work on the last batch of the OPAs. I would also like to note for council that adoption of the OPAs is important, and it allows for the city to meet its obligation and conformity requirements under the Planning Act and to conform to the 2022 Regional Official Plan. It would also allow the city to move forward with the Transportation Master Plan and Urban Master Environmental Servicing Plan, which allows the city to plan for infrastructure capacity. And lastly, it would allow the city to move forward with the Development Charges Bylaw Update, which is required to be completed by early 2024, and this will then enable the city to collect funds to provide for infrastructure in key growth areas. Next slide, please. And that ends my presentation. The recommendation to the committee is to receive the staff report on OPA 18.5 and to adopt the OPA, and following adoption, to forward OPA 18.5 to York Region for approval. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. This official plan amendment represents a very significant transformative plan. No, nowhere else in the GTA is there such an aggressive transformation as what's happening between Young and Highway 7 and, and Young and 16th here and what's being proposed. So this, although it's our second-largest official plan amendment change, it's, it's still right up there in one of the top and most, most, you know, aggressive official plans for, for all the GTA. So we thank all the planning staff that's here and all the work that's been done and all the public consultation process that's led, led us to this point. So we have that presentation. What I'm going to do is allow committee members to ask questions now. And item 11.4 will, will come forward in regular order, but now is an opportunity if any members of committee want to ask questions. Okay, go ahead, councillor Davidson.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I do, is the 55 stories because of provincial guidelines or that just seems extremely high when maybe we consider those heights, in my opinion, when the subway is actually there? But 55, what, why that? Why that is the top?
Thank you councillor Davidson for your question. The 55 stories, it's conceptual and it's not set in stone. Basically, we use 3D modeling to assess the density of a 7.0 FSI, that's floor space index. And so we would take that density and we sort of mass it out using towers and podiums. And according to our 3D modeling, it shows about 55-story, but it could range. It really depends on how the developer would configure that site. Nonetheless, we looked at 55-story because we looked at the center in relation to the city structure. So we know that the Young and 16th Avenue KDA is the second-densest location next to the Richmond Hill Center. So Richmond Hill Center has the highest density in the city. And then following the Young and 16th KDA, it would be the Bernard, Young and Bernard KDA. So our center, the Young and 16th smacks somewhere in the middle. And we know that for the Young, sorry, for the Richmond Hill Center, that area ranges from eight stories to 80 stories. And so that's a fairly intensified area. And their, their FSIs range from 3 FSI to 18.8 FSI. So when we compare that against the KDA, our FSI range from 1.0 to 8.77, and the tallest towers are, is likely 55 stories. So we see that, you know, when we place ourselves relative to, to, to the Richmond Hill Center and relative to the Young and Bernard Key Development Area, we think it's appropriate in terms of height and density.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Forgive me and I totally respect your expertise, but whatever FSI, you lose me usually, but do the models consider that there's no go-station there now? I mean, it's great to talk conceptually, but I think we can agree that developers aren't going to talk conceptually, they're going to show up with 55 stories. Why bake that in here when we don't have the infrastructure to support it in terms of transportation? What's the thinking? Is it that if you build it, transportation will come? Or do we want the transportation and the ability for people living there to live without gridlock and pull their hair out and then we bring the developers? It feels, it feels, it feels like too much. And that area is already bumper to bumper. So what's the thinking there?
Thank you again for your question, councillor Davidson. In terms of planning for growth and planning for infrastructure for area, for that area, it comes hand in, hand in hand. So there are plans for subway station, potential subway station and a potential go-station. There are plans for improvements to 16th Avenue. We know at the, on Young Street, there's already a BRT. And we do know that it takes time for those infrastructure to come into place. Right now, the go-station and the subway station, they're not funded yet, but these are potential stations that MetroLinks is considering. And we do have policies in our official plan that speaks to phasing of development so that development would be timed with the provision of infrastructure. So we have to remember that development takes a long time to plan. You know, the 55 stories, all these high rises, they're, they're going to take time to, to be designed and funded and constructed. It will take many years. It will not happen overnight. And so the, the, these developments will be phased in accordance with the provision of infrastructure. But, you know, an official plan, it looks into the long term. It looks into up to 2051. And so that's what we're planning for, for the long term.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. My last question is, even though it's our plan to be long, is if we change the official plan, isn't that immediately that anyone could apply 55 stories in that area? Or is it phased in? You can do 25 stories until 2030 and you can do?
Thank you again for your question, councillor Davidson. When the official plan is updated, the permission becomes, it becomes available immediately. But as, as I mentioned, in our current official plan, we do have phasing policies that But as as I mentioned, in our current official plan, we do have phasing policies that speaks to development must be aligned with the provision of infrastructure. So those those requirements needs to be met, you know, as as we plan out this area. And and to be frank, our job as city planners, we look at what's appropriate, we plan for the long term, but we don't actually do the construction or building of housing or, you know, non-residential spaces. These are up to the developers and builders, and they listen to the market. And the market may not be ready to accept fifty five stories at this point. It will take time to build those units.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, Counselor Tree.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chair. My first question, what is the jobs number, also the residents or people's number for this new updates comparison made by?
Thank you, Counselor Tree. So your question, you're asking for what's the forecasted number of people and jobs?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So the number forecasted people for this K D A is twenty three thousand three hundred people. And in terms of jobs, it's forecasted to be eight thousand six hundred jobs.
Let me for a second. Let me talk a minute. And is there any slide or information? I know we have a similar Richmark Hill second plan. We do have a map. All those F S Is, also the numbers of residents and also jobs are listed. Is there any way you can modify and put this information in one of the slides showing all the details together?
Showing on the slides. So you'd like us to come back with information?
No, what's the question is here? I cannot see those numbers. I was reading through around fifty pages long. Can you have only one page showing those numbers, numbers of people, numbers of jobs with F S I together?
Maybe possible to come to council with that information next week?
I do want to recommend, I do want to note that our staff report do have that number. It's right on.
I know I have to read around fifty pages long, one hour. I want to see one slide in two seconds. I can see that number. My second question regarding to the the number of peoples and jobs. I see the F S I around the Hill Crest Mall changing from two point zero to one point zero. Is that going to be a commercial area or it's going to be the residence area? How many jobs we lost from there?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Tree. So your your question pertained to.
Hill Crest Mall.
To the Hill Crest Mall, yes. So previously, the Hill Crest Mall development block had a two point zero F S I density. It then got reduced to one point zero. The reason for that is because in our discussion with Hill Crest Mall, they had indicated that it's likely very hard for them to 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 add more commercial retail space to what they currently have. However, I want to note that the current F S I, the current density in that Hill Crest Mall block is actually zero point five to zero point six. We're giving them one point zero, which allows them to actually increase their existing commercial space up to probably sixty thousand square meters. So that's a lot of space, a lot of more commercial space to grow and a lot more jobs should they choose to implement that. What they have asked is to redistribute some of that density from the mall block to the site along Young Street. And we did that. We helped to accommodate a little bit of growth along Young Street. And I think that makes sense because along Young Street, there is the B R T, so it is supported by transit. Does that help?
Let me just confirm one more time. So because Hill Crest Mall is biggest mall in Richmark Hill, this is the only big one. If we reduce F S from two point zero to one point zero, how many jobs will be lost in this area?
So I, the jobs are actually going to be gained based on existing density. Because the existing existing density there, there is only zero point five to zero point to zero point six. And what we're doing is really listening to Hill Crest Mall, the owner, who is Oxford Property. Oxford Property told us that it's it's hard for them to grow, but we still give them the permission to grow because we're increasing their current F S I from a zero point five or zero point six to a one point zero. So they will have the opportunity to grow if they choose to. So in my mind, that's actually an increase of non-residential G F A and an increase in the number of jobs.
Okay, thank you so much. So my next question regarding to, as Counselor Karen mentioned, regarding to the fifty five floors building. As I remember, a few years ago, around the Sixteenth Street, Sixteenth Street and also Young Street, about eight point seven F S I buildings. The previous council already discussed that one. I think the answer was no. Also regarding to eight point zero across street on the Young and Carrollville, I think the previous council member also wrote as no as well, if I'm right, correct me wrong. The number of F I is that proposed, recommended by city or proposed, recommended by builder? What is our projection from city? We are planning department. Supposedly, we are leading the development of our city as overall. My understanding is from city perspective, we should project based on federal, based on provincial, based on the region's requirement and our own needs instead of demanding from builder. So is that projection by city or projection by the builder?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Tree. So with respect to the eight point seven seven F S I, you're speaking to the development site or the development block located in the southeast quadrant, southeast corner of Young and Sixteen Avenue. And that particular site, previously staff had assessed that application and staff has recommended to go forward with that application. They believe the height and in terms of height and density, the staff believe that it was appropriate for that site. And so in this O P A, we are going forward with our professional opinion. And it is a planner's professional opinion, and it is based on staff's assessment and believe that eight point seven seven F S I is appropriate for that site.
Okay, because we are councilor, we are not asking here, but I just want to echo from the visualizing both from different areas seeing the according to.
Excuse me, Counselor, sorry. So we're just asking questions of the presenter, anything that you need to have clarified. If you want to forward a position of debate, we will bring the item forward later.
Sure, I will leave my question later. Thanks.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, clarification, because that's my understanding. We would have a full some discussions, I hope, until eleven P M tonight, maybe, on this one. Yeah, well, I mean, full some, that's what I meant, that discussion on this item and other items. But my understanding is now focused on the presentation of slides. Do we have questions? But thank you for bringing up, Counselor Tree. So could I possibly have, it's true, you show again the slide that actually have that diagram crafting out eight point seven on the southeast, eight point zero and the southwest of the intersection. Can you bring up that slide? I do have question on that one. Right, thank you, because I, Counselor Tree already asked a question, eight point seven seven, and you answered that. Eight point zero. Would that be relating to through you, Mr. Chair, ninety two fifty one Young Street proposal? Well, I believe it's actually no longer, well, it's the case, maybe you cannot comment. I just want to confirm the address. It's a case before the Anterland Tribunal. Is that the one?
Thank you, Counselor Chan.
Southwest corner, yeah.
Yeah, the southwest corner with the eight point oh F S I, that pertains to ninety two eighteen Young. And you're right, it is in front of the tribunal.
Thank you. So, yeah, those numbers, we can talk about later in eleven point four. It's certainly on the face of it, it looks high. And I was just wondering, how would that reconcile on the tables on the left? Then we're talking about the street wall, interesting word, but maximum of four. Now, that, help me understand, it's true. So this street wall is meaning only frontage on the corridor of Young Street, is that correct? So the buildings will understand it, the high rises will be like stepping up or back that way away from Young Street. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Chan. Your description of how the street wall functions is correct. But I would just clarify that the street wall height maximum of four stories only applies to the market promenade, which runs in the northern quadrants. So it would run near Hill Crest Mall and then and then it would run across the Smart Centers lands, which is the South Hills Shopping Center area.
Okay, thank you. So it's true for Mr. Chair, if you can flip to the other slide that where you have showing that actually is a bridge at the south or northeast quadrant that across the tracks, not this one, but this is slide, they're showing a a bridge there and also the new road system. Yeah, that's one. Thank you. So on this particular slide, it's a new bridge, which I I believe that was mentioned. And the multi-use trail, through Mr. Chair, could you help to enlighten us? Is a multi-use trail meant to be one perhaps parallel to the C N tracks? I just wonder whereabouts will be multi-use trail because it's so close to the David Dunlop Observatory. I wonder where where it was, location is and where lead to, through you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Chan, for your question. The multi-trail, multi-use trail, as you noted, it does align with the C N rail corridor. So it's not quite finalized yet. It's conceptual right now. However, that's the plan, is that it would it would line up along the C N rail. But once it passed Sixteen Avenue, it sort of, it sort of hugs the, it would be the Greenway system that's, that's that's sort of within the K D A, and then it goes, it continues up again, following the German Mills Creek.
Thank you. Again, through Mr. Chair, I can see the bridge is from the Smart Center site, across the bridge, but where is it leading to? It looks like a long strip towards the right. Would it be landed into the, not so far as the Berwick Street or the, where is it leading to, through Mr. Chair, on the other and the right hand side?
So I I think I may need to default to our parks and planning parks folks. But I believe it crosses, this is a a new bridge, it crosses over, and I think it's close to the Cordon Park. I can't remember the name of that park.
Dove, Dove Tail Park, I think that's what called.
I think so.
Yeah.
And yeah, and then and then there's a, I think, existing trail, then that continues up to the David Dunlop Observatory Park.
Right, thank you. And on the subject of park, I'm glad to see that on the second bullet on the left, it's a new neighborhood park in south, northeast quadrant. Help me understand again, on the slide in front of us, is that the kind of yellowish spot just on the south side of the proposed bridge? Whereabouts, whereabouts that new neighborhood park in northeast quadrant?
Okay, so the.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Chan. The neighborhood park in the northeast quadrant, it is located currently on the west side of the Collector Street. I would, I do note that in our O P A, there's language, policy language that speaks to the use of that park to be shared with a potential public school in that area. And also, the language is flexible so that the location of the park could be further refined. There may be opportunity to move the park either north or east or even south. So it really depends on the city working with the proponent, you know, as as this area gets developed.
So from Mr. Chair, thank you for the answer. So it would not be in precise to say yet to be determined. But this is different from the previous version about a series of linear park along on Sixteen Avenue. Now, one last question within the timeframe. I'm glad to see in every quadrant, there'll be new road system. Are those private road, meaning paid by the developer of northeast, northwest quadrant? Up for you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Chan, for your question. All the roads shown on the schedules are public roads. If there are private roads, they're not shown here. But we do have policies in the in the O P A that speaks to the provision of private interconnections that could be required in addition to what is already shown on these schedules.
Right, okay, it's not a question to comment, we can, about eleven point four comes up. If, well, not if, when Sixteen Avenue may be expanded by the region, I wonder what the allowances may be considered there. But I'll leave it as a comment because it's not part of the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counselor Silivitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Chan, for your your presentation, for all the time that you've spent with us as councilors. Just one, I just have one question. On slide eight, where we show the specified densities for the four corners. So seven point oh northwest, seven point oh northeast, eight point oh southwest and eight point seven seven southeast. Are those, do those figures meet the official plan for York Region standard? I would imagine that we must be in, we must, we must be dovetailing exactly with them, and that has been approved.
Thank you, Counselor Silivitch, for your question. The F S Is defined on the schedule in the intersection of Young Street and Carville or Sixteen Avenue. These are proposed by the city, but we do conform with the York Region's official plan because we do need to meet a minimum of three hundred people and jobs per hectare. So these densities contribute to that.
Thank you. That's that's just very important, very important information, especially for the public record. Because as the lower tier municipality, we have to conform with what York Region has already prescribed and approved. And then we also have to conform with what the legislation from the province has has in store for us as well. So I I just wanted to make sure that we are, we are conform, we're in conformity with York Region because then those are the numbers, can't go anywhere else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. So I just have a couple of questions. Now, regarding the timeline, the, assuming this goes forward and is passed by council next week and then as you've prescribed, goes up to the region for approval. Is there any, is there any new development as as to when the province is going to become the approval authority? Are we assuming that that will not happen by November so that the region will be the approval authority?
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Chair, for your question, for your question. With regards to the approval authority, as it stands, the York, York Region is still our approval authority. There has been no change to legislation. And so until the province makes an announcement, we, we, we really don't know. I believe the review is still undergo, it will. I I believe the review is still undergo, it will be undertaken by the province, but we have not heard about any forthcoming decisions.
Okay, I think they have made an announcement and that's sort of the problem, they they make announcements and then regulations haven't come out and and legislation has taken effect, if that's the case. So so no new development there that you know of and we we can safely assume that the region will be reviewing what we do here. Okay, I did, I did want to ask and I know we had, we had a separate public process regarding amending this this key development area to extend further south. And that's been completed and that decision is made by council or it happens as a as a result of of this new O P A that's on the table today?
Thank you for that question, Chair. The expansion to the south is a part of this O P A package, the boundary expansion of this K D A. And so if council approves of this O P A, then the boundary would also be updated.
Okay, so the K D A's boundary will be expanded as a result of the adoption or enactment of this new O P A. Good, okay, because I know we had a separate public process to to discuss the expansion of the boundary. Okay, thank you for those answers. I think that's that's all for questions for now and we will will in due course get to eleven point four and and we'll deal with this this draft O P A as we move along with the agenda. So there's one more presentation before we yeah, okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Chan with thanks to the presenter to receive the presentation, all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, that carries. And we move to the next presentation. It's regarding our our village local centre, O P A eighteen point six. And this presentation is from Brian DeFritis, our manager of policy. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Mayor West and members of council and members of the public in attendance and present virtually. My name is Brian DeFritis and I'm a senior planner in the policy section of the city and it is my pleasure to provide you today with an overview of official plan amendment eighteen point six, respecting the village local centre that is before committee today. Next slide, please. A quick overview of this presentation, which will cover the intent of O P A eighteen point six for the village local centre. An overview of public engagement and consultation undertaken on the amendment. A summary of key feedback heard, summary of the recommended policy framework, a brief overview of the proposed changes to the O P A since it was released in May. And then we'll touch on the O P A timeline, next steps and staff's recommendation to council. Next slide, please. As my colleague had explained to committee and as council may be aware, O P A eighteen point six is one of four area specific amendments that form part of the city's O P update process, which are being advanced at this time. At today's meeting, council will consider eighteen point five for the K D A at Young and Sixteenth and eighteen point six, which will deal with the village local centre. This will be followed by O P As eighteen point seven and eighteen point eight, which will be considered at the November fifteenth committee of the whole. The intent of the village local centre O P A is to update chapter four of the official plan by removing reference to the downtown local centre policies and replacing them with new policies respecting the village local centre. The modifications to the city's official plan ensure that planning for this area of the city achieves the land use vision for it, which is a village within the city and that it conforms with provincial and regional policies. The O P A satisfies the requirements for a secondary plan for this centre set out in the official plan by planning for land use, built form and public realm comprehensively. Next slide, please. As background, again, it is important to remind council how this O P A fits into the overall city structure. As you may recall, the city structure was updated and approved in June twenty twenty two and it sets out where intensification is directed throughout the city via a network of centres and corridors. And in keeping with provincial policy direction, the city is required to direct and accommodate growth within the structure. And this includes the village local centre with its unique heritage context. The work on the O P A also carries out the key directions for this local centre as endorsed by council in February of twenty twenty two. Next slide, please. Extensive public consultation for the four centres began in November of twenty twenty two to establish land use visions for each. We then held stakeholder meetings in March of twenty twenty three. The draft O P As were shared with the public and prescribed bodies in May of this year. Then in June, staff held statutory open house and public meeting. Staff also met with stakeholders and landowners over the summer and fall. The village, for the village, staff met with the Village Core Residents Association, representatives from the Major Mackenzie Landowners Group and Downtown Collective Property Owners and Landowners Group. And this brings us to today's committee meeting where staff are recommending adoption of the O P A to council. Next slide, please. With respect to feedback, the city did receive numerous submissions on the O P A from the general public, government agencies and landowners during the public comment period. Overall, the feedback received on the O P A has generally been positive with there being support for modest levels of intensification in the village centre, given its unique and sensitive context and its heritage attributes and being supported by the public rapid transit along Young Street. However, the city did receive some opposing feedback on several key aspects of the O P A, including heightened density, with feedback indicating that the permissions in the O P A respecting heightened density were either too high for the village context or too low to enable redevelopment. With respect to angular planes, staff received feedback indicating support for more aggressive angular plane policies to be applied in the village, in particular on the west side of Young and that the angular plane be removed altogether. With respect to compatibility, staff received feedback indicating support for expanded permissions for non-residential uses in the local centre, but with some concerns expressed regarding the potential impacts of that on the surrounding neighbourhood. Next slide, please. The O P A policy framework sets out land use permissions that allow for a mix of range and land uses that are shown on the slide. In addition, it also sets out requirements for non-residential uses to be provided at grade along Young Street and Major Mackenzie Drive to promote jobs. It is noted that no further substantial changes to the land use policies in the O P A are proposed from what was set out in the May eleventh draft of the O P A. Next slide, please. With respect to heightened density, O P A eighteen point six proposes modest increases in heightened density from the twenty ten official plan. South of Wright and Dunlop Streets, the O P A recommends heights ranging from two to nine stories, up from the two to five stories under the twenty ten official plan and up to three F S I directed to Young Street. North of Wright and Dunlop Streets, the O P A recommends heights ranging from two to fifteen stories and up to three F S I directed to Young Street. And it is noted that no further changes to the heightened density policies in the O P A are proposed from what was set out in the May eleventh draft. Next slide, please. With respect to public realm, the policies of the O P A enhance the public realm. They encourage pedestrian and cycling connections and promote new urban plazas. Key elements of the amendment include new proposed local streets west of Young Street, between Wright and Benson Avenue and the extension of Elizabeth Street south down to Major Mackenzie Drive. There are several new proposed cycling connections along Church Street, south of Centre and Dunlop Street and along Wright Street north of Centre. With respect to parks, the O P A is informed by and implements the city's twenty twenty two parks plan. Aside from a proposed expansion of Kozak Park in the north, north of the centre and a proposed destination park at the southwest corner of Major Mackenzie Drive and Young Street to provide space for events and to connect with the wave pool and the central library, no new parks are being proposed in this centre as it is already well-served by existing parkland within a short walking distance. However, to enhance the public round, the O P A encourages new development to contribute to urban plazas, which are privately owned, publicly accessible spaces that provide some of the benefits of public parks. No overall substantial changes to the public round policies of the O P A are proposed from what was set out in the May eleventh draft. Next slide, please. So as I noted, with respect to heightened density, there are no substantial changes being made from what was set out in the May eleventh draft. This means that permissions for up to nine stories in the village, south of Wright and Dunlop Streets remain unchanged. With respect to angular plane, the existing angular plane provisions in the city's official plan will continue to apply. Staff are not recommending any further changes to the angular plane. But where changes are proposed, they are considered minor and technical in nature and they are intended to respond to feedback and improve readability and clarity of the the plan. This includes things like the introduction of new sidebar text and removing reference to mid-rise and high-rise so they do not conflict with existing O P definitions. Next slide, please. This slide again illustrates the O P A timeline and next steps. As you can see, the O P A was released in May. We have come through the statutory component in June. Over the course of the summer, staff met with stakeholders to receive feedback and synthesize it. At today's meeting, council is considering the O P A for adoption. Following adoption, staff will forward the O P A to York Region as the approval authority and staff will continue to work on the next batch of O P As that will culminate in the update of the O P. And those O P As include housekeeping, employment and the remaining M T S A and corridors. And I would also note for council that again, the adoption of this O P A is an important milestone and it allows the city to meet its conformity requirements under the Planning Act, to conform to the regional O P. It allows the city to move forward with its transportation master plan, the urban master environmental servicing plan to plan for infrastructure and it allows the city to move forward with its development charges by law update, which is required to be completed by twenty twenty four to allow the city to begin collecting back what is needed to plan for growth. Next slide, please. So this concludes my presentation. The recommendation before the committee today is to receive the staff report that the council adopt O P A eighteen point six as attached to the staff report and that following adoption, staff forward the O P A to York Region for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Again, I know there's there's a lot of work that's that's gone into it. I want to thank all the members of our planning staff that are that are involved and got to us to this point today. And and again, thanks for the public process and and to all the public that commented and all the all the stakeholders that were involved and engaged and have guided us to to this point where we are today. So members of committee, just please keep your questions to clarification on any points that was made in the presentation. Though there's lots of time to discuss this when the item comes forward for consideration to recommend to council. So I've got councillor Tree who wants to go with a question. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair. So you, Ms. Chair, to our staff, my first question very simple. I haven't seen any projections for the the residents numbers, also the jobs could be created. I took, I tried to look at it, May, also this new plan, I did not find it. So where is that information available?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question councillor Tree. It is located on page, I believe, three of appendix A, but I can give you the number. This O P A plans for up to ten thousand residents and up to thirty seven hundred jobs at full buildout, which is very, very long term.
Okay, thank you so much. My second question regarding to the maps, I look at the maps and there are different maps regarding to the boundary of this village core line. So and there are also included the the south part of Major Mack, is that accurate or is that not accurate?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it is accurate. However, what this official plan amendment is doing is focusing on the village component, which is the area between Major Mack up to Crosby. If councillor recalls back, there was a former secondary plan for this area that was repealed by council. It was called the downtown local centre secondary plan and it included three districts. This official plan amendment is doing away with that reference and terminology in the plan to implement the council's decision of repealing that secondary plan. So those two flanking districts, the uptown and the civic, those are now being re-designated to mixed use corridor through this O P A.
Thank you so much. My suggestion here is if you look at all the maps, I did not see any timeline because there's no dates. I didn't also any warrant controls, so I don't know which one is current. If in the next meeting, if you can put those warrants and dates there, it'll be much more easier to explain what's the current in scope. Otherwise, I'd look at four or five maps, I don't know which one really we're discussing.
Your points well taken, thank you councillor, we'll try to do that.
Also, the number of the residents and also jobs, would you mind into a same slide as well? Just easy to read and remember. Okay, I do have other questions, I'll leave for next meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor. Deputy Mayor Chan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you representation by staff. Again, I just focus at these questions on these slides. We will have lots of time to discuss the topic later on, which I do have quite a number of things to talk about later. But specifically on slide number nine, if you don't mind, you put it up again. Okay, so and it talks about, yeah, certain it is a shift from the previous uptown, midtown or south wherever. But I'm glad always saying that this is no longer downtown Richmond Hill. So the change of name is important. It's a village local centre, let's be clear. And on the left hand side, it does talk about two new proposed local streets. Help me understand, is that like the wish of the city? But the timing, have any sense of timing or is it, do we have any prescribed timeline? We have to have make it happen to Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question. The timing is what would be the timing of this official plan amendment out to the future? So it would be generally to twenty fifty one, it's long term. The alignments you see in the official plan are conceptual. It would happen though, if it were to happen sooner through development. So if lands in those areas where the new proposed streets are shown come to fruition, if the landowners assemble and ultimately submit development application, then the planning for that, those local streets would come before council sooner.
Thank you. So if I interpret it correctly, understand it correctly, that means it's something in the books, so to speak, assuming the policy O P A eighteen point six will be adopted next week, as is. So anytime between now and twenty fifty one, subject to changes in the in those land based on whatever proposed development coming up. Is that, is my interpretation correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair, generally. So what this O P A is doing is putting the framework in place to demonstrate where the public realm elements the city would like to plan for in the future. So with respect to the two public streets in the northeast corner and in the southern, the southeast west of Young Street, the city is demonstrating through the policies where it would like to see new public streets located in this centre to serve the centre.
Okay, now, in the report, there's many other issues being brought up, parking, things of that nature. Did I miss any slides that maybe we touch on parking at all through Mr. Chair? I don't recall seeing one.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is no specific slide in the presentation on parking, it is addressed in the staff report.
Okay, so we'll deal with it later. So other than two, those two streets, unlike the presentation earlier, there is no other kind of because the new proposed local streets, based on hearing, is subject to and contingent on a number of things. But would also under this policy, would that planner would propose you have all the streets, east-west connection, things of that nature? Or or this is it in terms of new proposed local streets, through Mr. Chair?
Through you, Mr. Chair, this is the extent of the the where new local streets are contemplated and and being planned for in this centre.
Okay, now, help me understand through Mr. Chair again. You mentioned about this no slide on parking. I don't recall seeing any particular slide relating to reference to the M T S A, particular on Young Street. Through you, Mr. Chair, is that correct?
Correct, but there is two M T S As that expand through this local centre. This local centre is implementing that that direction through the regional O P.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. So there's nothing on slides, I can ask? Okay, so, okay, thank you. So there's nothing on slides I can ask questions on, but it's certainly a topic to discuss about a transportation management plan that we will have a ramification on, I guess, of parking as well as the MTSA. No further question on this slides. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I don't see any other questions on the presentation. We will deal with this in length. I have one question. Because we're always referencing the changes from May eleventh draft versus, you know, versus the changes overall to what's existing. There's no change in angular plane from what was proposed in May eleventh. Now, if you could just clarify because of your second slide there, that means the angular plane is only going to be proposed to be thirty degrees west of Young Street. But no, no, no change to the forty-five degree angle east of Young.
You have it backwards, councillor. It's east of Young Street. There's a thirty-degree angular plane. All see in the official plan. There's no change being proposed to that. And on the west side, there's a forty-five-degree angular plane that would apply. There's no proposed change to that.
No proposed change to the existing forty-five-degree angular plane on the west side of Young Street. Okay, thank you. Okay, so thanks again for that presentation and to everyone who made presentation, contributed to today's very, very key major OPA of proposed amendments. Their mayor currently and the past mayor refers to building a city within a town. And this, this particular OPA is building a village within a city. So it's, it's very interesting and very, very different, but huge implications for residents and so many people have weighed in. And so there's, there's so much correspondence that's being considered as we deal with these two items. So we will get to them in due course. We'll go back to the, we'll now move to delegations. And a motion for receipt. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Chan. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Thank you. So now we go to delegations and the first three delegations are regarding the Young and Sixteenth key development area. And that corresponding OPA eighteen point five. The first delegate is Howard Doughty from Ten Cheval Court. Good morning, Mr. Doughty.
Good morning, sir, and good morning to all. The last time I had the privilege and pleasure of chatting with you, I was talking primarily about the Oak Ridge, it's more rain and the development that has been spoken of in that area. I'd like to shift gears a little bit and try to put to you a proposition. It has to do with the overall attitude, not only towards this particular initiative, but the whole role of the city council in terms of the development industry. And the hopes that we can indeed address some of the serious problems that face us. No one, I think, denies that there is a serious crisis in housing. And that is at the root of most of the talk that's going to be taking place here now and in the near future. Back in nineteen fifty-four, the American Supreme Court Justice Felix Frankfurter introduced a phrase that's become very common, but I think misunderstood. The phrase was to move forward with all deliberate speed. People think that that means to move forward quickly. It does not. It means to move forward deliberately, crossing all Ts, dotting all Is, and quite frankly, making sure that mistakes are not made in the process. The current premier has gone forward on the slogan, get it done. I suggest that he's getting it done and all of the subsidiary levels of government are getting it done without adequate consideration of the public good. I understand fully that this council must comply with York Region, that York Region must comply with the province. But I think there's an element of what I will call learned helplessness, undeserved deference. And so whether we are talking about education, healthcare, urban planning, housing, or whatever, there's a tendency not to try to be as proactive as possible. Last time I suggested that this too will pass. And by that, I meant the current provincial government, which I see is at the root of all of the issues facing council today. I think I was too cautious. As I'm speaking, the RCNP is interviewing people about corruption and maybe criminality at the provincial level. The premier has more to worry about than this council and these measures. He's not finished by any means, but neither does he have the wind at his back. He's evaded and dissembled, bragged and backtracked. I may be too optimistic, but I am hopeful that he is currently flipping his last flop. It's time for a reset. Instead of assuming that the worst is coming and being gratified with tokens and crumbs, I urge you to please take the next several citizens' issues to heart to consider the possibility of cooperating, not only with the region and other municipalities, but also reaching out to the federal government, as has been suggested in terms of financial assistance to promote reasonable growth and reasonable accommodation. But also to stop trying to be a referee without a whistle. Normalcy, as has been stated here before, has had the municipality produce plans, but the real dynamic has always been the developer and the market. We are in a housing crisis. It's time to reverse that relationship. And I put it to you that the private sector has failed. It has created the problems that we now face. And I urge you to try to take advantage of this crisis by putting the public first. This is not easy and it will require tremendous vigilance, determination, and courage. But if we can for once leave it to the people through you and through the senior levels of government to articulate a vision that is not simply to give the impetus to the private sector, to do what it does best, make money, and to put the public interest first.
Sorry, Mr. Doughty, to cut you there. You're a minute over your time. You're always so eloquent. I wanted to give you the benefit of the doubt. Can you just wrap up really quick?
I can wrap up very quickly. Please do your best to try to put the public first and not simply defer to the developers as they put forward their plan for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next delegate is Mr. Mark Resnick from South Hill Shopping Centers. Mr. Resnick?
Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of committee. I'm here today speaking on behalf of South Hill Shopping Center's owner of the property at nine three oh one to nine three three five Young Street to provide comments on the proposed OPA eighteen point five for the Young and Sixteenth KDA. At the outset, we'd like to thank staff for their collaborative approach, meeting with landowners to listen and respond to our comments. And we acknowledge many of our comments have been implemented in the draft OPA before you today. Having had the opportunity to review the current draft, we do still have outstanding comments we hope can and will be addressed prior to finalization of OPA eighteen point five. I will focus my deputation on these issues. Next slide, please. To provide some context, an aerial image is provided to illustrate our property outlined in red, the first phase of development for which applications have been submitted in yellow, and that all relates to the blue boundary of the KDA. The site is currently a functioning shopping center that is proposed to be redeveloped in a phased manner. It will keep the existing shopping center open as redevelopment occurs. Next slide, please. For our first comment, we're requesting that the density allocation limits shown on Schedule C one be revised to extend to the easterly limit of the property to include the area shaded in yellow. We request inclusion of the area in yellow for a few reasons. One, the density allocations for all other parcels in the KDA extend fully to the property limit, and the same should be applied to our property. Second, in our view, the determination of any development or density limit is premature until the appropriate studies are completed to define the greenway limits and location of the proposed collector roads, which are significant inputs into establishing the easterly limit of development. And lastly, as a consideration for the yellow area, the greenway limits do not extend the full length of the boundary where we have shown in the dash line, south of there, the property is abutting the railway and similar to the property south, where the density allocations extend to the full eastern limits, we're proposing and requesting the same for our property limit. Next slide, please. The next two comments I wish to highlight relate to private roads and the subway alignment. On Schedule C two on the screen and in the related policies of official plan amendment eighteen point five, we find there's a preference towards the conclusion that all roads being public. We fully recognize the need for public roads, but not all roads are required to be public. This comment I'm making now is focused on the proposed roads outlined in the red dash lines, the internal north-south roads. An example of the policies is Policy four four two three sub one, which falls under the heading Public Streets and states, proponents of development shall implement a street network and active transportation network as conceptually shown on Schedule C two. By stating shall, it can be read as a directive to implement public roads. In discussions with staff on this matter, we have been directed to related policies in the Part One Plan portion of the official plan, which provide for criteria and consideration for private or strata roads. And we are advised that the secondary plan is to be read in conjunction with these policies. Having considered staff's comments, we're requesting added policy language to eighteen point five to clarify this understanding of how the plan is to be read to ensure consideration for potential future private roads is clear. On the matter of the future subway alignment, as staff had outlined in their presentation, the depiction of the subway extension and potential locations is very conceptual, which is a change from the previous version. We fully support the provision of transit. It's integral to the development of the KDA. And we do seek some clarification and guidance from staff how the policies for the future subway extension and the stations will be applied in evaluating future applications given these changes. As a final comment, I'd like to ask for further revisions to the policies around street activation. Policy four four two one sub two B states, to activate at-grade street frontages, development shall provide commercial, retail, or community uses a grade. In our view, this policy should be revised to recognize the need for other items at grade, such as lobby space and amenity area. As you can see from the conceptual road network, many buildings may be bounded on all sides by roads. Activation by retail use is too often put forward as a one-size-fits-all solution for street activation. And in our view, there should be an acknowledgement in the policies that street activation by retail is not viable for all streets. Activation can also be achieved through lobbies, amenity areas. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Resnick. Very clear your stance there. The next delegation is from John Lee, two oh six Brookside Road. Mr. Lee, I see you online there. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. For the final draft of Young Sixteen KDA, I would like to highlight several key concerns and compare them to the June draft. Next slide, please. My primary concern is who sleeps our community? Is the city, the residents, or the developers? The hyperdensities imposed on this map are taken directly from developer proposal without, but without necessary infrastructure support. Most of this density I can still recall. Keep in mind, none of this density was supported by the previous council. Why have they been granted now? This situation mirrored what happened with the Young Bernard KDA, where the city approved even more than what developer had asked for. This was a significant factor in our neighborhood overwhelmingly vote out three previous councillors. Second, there is concern about a low employment ratio. This region here the primary commercial area, yet only eighty-six hundred jobs are projected against twenty-three thousand residents. This creates a deficit of three thousand jobs for our community, which is a cause of concern. Third, we have the traffic and the safety concern. With more than ten thousand residents set to be added within one hundred meter radius of the Young Sixteen intersection. It's worth noting, noting, noting that this intersection ranks as number one motorcycle collision injury site in York Region over the past decade. We must address this issue to ensure the safety of residents. The fourth concern is the significant reduction of the parking space in the mall. The removal of seventy percent of parking space in the east side of the mall will pose significant challenge, especially during weekend and holidays. This plan could potentially turn the traffic situation in this area into nightmare. In summary, this draft is planning an area that does not align with the fundamental principles of a livable community. Next slide, please. For the final draft to be reviewed today, none of the above concerns has been addressed. What even more surprising is the substantial removal of employment space within the Hierarchial Area, where the density FSI has been reduced from two to one. Approximately one point three million square feet of commercial space being removed. It implies that initial project of eighty-six thousand, eighty-six hundred jobs will be reduced by four thousand. As a result, the job deficit as compared to the previous draft will now double, approximately seven thousand job deficit. This region mirrors exactly what Doc Ford did in the Young Four Seven E M Zero. Reduce employment space in favor of developers create residential units for profit. It's widely acknowledged that Richmond Hill has been named as a sleep park. I believe all council members and the planning team are well aware of this correction. So why are we falling in the same path that Doc Ford took for our city? It's a defeat common. Financially, it has been evident that an increase in the high-rise resident lead to a large deficit in the city revenue. This in turn forced the city to consider as a reduction in service or an increasing the tax burden on residents. Why are we cutting employment opportunity in this premium commercial area? Making a already deteriorated financial situation in Richmond Hill even worse. Next slide, please. In our city, we have three KDAs. The Young Bernard KDA has been The Young Bernard K D A has been ruined by the previous council. Richmond Hill Center face transmission, transmission from a vibrant unit station north to a sleep town expansion. Are we risking the same fate for our city's last piece of commercial land? Today, with many young people present in the chamber, I'm a prompt to ask, what legacy are we creating?
Your time's up, Mr. Lee, but like the last two speakers, I'll give you an opportunity to just quickly sum up.
Okay, I urge all the council members to carefully consider this concern and their potential impact to our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for wrapping up. Okay. So, uh, we have four, four other delegations that that are all pertaining to eighteen point six, the Village Local Center. And the next, uh, delegate is Adam Layton from Evans Planning. Mr. Layton? Go ahead. You have up to five minutes to address committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of ca- of committee. It's a pleasure to be before you today and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm here to provide comments in addition to our written correspondence uh, provided on behalf of the owners of fifty-two and fifty-six Dunlop Street uh, with respect to the proposed Village Local Center, uh, O P A eighteen point six. And in particular, we're here to again request that, uh, count, uh, the committee and staff consider revising the limits of the Village Local Center designation to correspond with the Crosby B R T station. Uh, in particular, uh, with respect to the subject properties, uh, these are on the south side of Dunlop Street, just east, uh, approximately two properties east of Church Street North. They are abutted by seven-story apartment buildings and four-story apartment buildings to the north and to the east and are within the Crosby B R T Station P M T S A, but are not identified within the Village Local Center designation. Uh, they are proposed to remain in the neighborhood designation. We're here to request that the limits of the Village Local Center designation correspond with the P M T S A and that these properties be included so that, uh, they can, uh, avail them, the owners could potentially avail themselves of development opportunities, which are generally would be in character with the, uh, existing development on Dunlop Street. Uh, we're not suggesting that there be any changes to the, uh, at least with respect to this property, uh, to the design matters of the parent O P or as outlined in the, uh, O P A eighteen point six. Uh, but again, we would like to see the, uh, the, the limits of the designation changed to incorporate this subject property because again, the existing context would seem to suggest that something more intense than what would otherwise be permitted in the neighborhood designation would be appropriate in this location. Thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Hey, very good. Thank you. Okay, uh, the next delegate. Corey is Harry Herak, uh, from sixty-six Major Mackenzie Drive West.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, and hi, Tamir West. Um, I was looking forward to seeing him here. My name is Harry Harat. I made a submission earlier this morning. It was six A M in writing um, of what I intended to present. As of this moment, I was unable to reach two of my fellow property owners around here and I need to withdraw that document because I don't feel comfortable not having them consent to it as it stands. In the meantime, I will share a few of my personal thoughts that I hope you can take into account in making decisions about the place that I live in. First and foremost, and very personal, um, in building a new community, you're annihilating mine. You're breaking mine apart. Mine doesn't exist. You're wiping it out. I don't know where's the provision for relief. I've been living under this cloud since twenty seventeen. It's debilitating. I'm eighty years old, guys. And I still want to be alive and have something to pass on to my children. Right now, the city is asking me to donate my land. I don't think that's legal. Secondly, who are the persons that you listen to when you hear or you want to make decisions about my land? We have a very small area there. But you're talking about a village, a city, a village within the city. What you're actually doing is a doing a heritage village within a heritage village. Because the nineteen ninety-eight guidelines for, um, Heritage District includes the entire area, Mill Pond, Trent Street, going up north, they're all yellow occupied and built before nineteen fifty. Mine is built after nineteen fifty and there's a half with people there. You're listening to the people on Mill Pond, by the way, which happens to be the approximate residents of the last five mayors of this city. They all live within three hundred meters of each other at Mill Pond. Oh, God bless and to everybody, to me too. So please, I have appointed or our group has appointed Mark, who would be speaking here today of, uh, K L M planning and I defer expertise to him. I basically gave you the human side of this whole process and there's a timeline to life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herak. Thank you for that. Okay, uh, the next delegate, as was mentioned, is, uh, Mark Yar- Yarrenton from K L M Planning.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, staff and public. My name is Mark Yarrenton with the firm of K L M Planning Partners. And I'd firstly like to thank everyone, uh, committee and staff for the opportunity to appear here before you with respect to item eleven point five and proposed official plan amendment eighteen point six for the Richmond Hill Village Center. We were retained by the Major Mackenzie Landowners Group, who own lands municipally known as fifty-two, fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-four, seventy-four, and seventy-six Major Mackenzie Drive West, which consists of approximately one point eight four acres that are generally just for references is centered around the lands associated with that Elizabeth Street Extension north of Major Mackenzie Drive and located at the southeast corner of the proposed local center. We have been participating for some time in this matter. We provided comments on the proposed O P A in our letter dated June nineteenth and again appeared at the public meeting on June twentieth. In addition, staff were good enough to meet with us, um, uh, those that have carriage of the official plan amendment eighteen point six on two occasions. And those discussions really involve the potential for site-specific planning policies for the subject lands. And though these conversations staff were not comfortable with establishing site-specific densities and height provisions beyond the current proposal before you today. But it through those discussions certainly seemed to be of the opinion that the potential for increased maximum height, density, transition, and details associated with Elizabeth Street would be more appropriately established through site-specific applications, where complete applications, studies, thorough analysis by all departments in the municipality would, uh, more appropriately inform those decisions. Again, we have now reviewed the O P A eighteen point six contained in the report before you today and we continue to have the same general concerns because as you've heard, there are very minor changes only made. Um, we are also somewhat, uh, concerned, I guess, by the approach or the need to even rush this O P A. Um, which includes two protected major transit station areas. Um, and they've effectively, in terms of the process, then the, the city intends to do uh, a further, uh, or essentially split uh, P M T S A forty-eight for the land south of Major Mackenzie. This approach to me as a professional planner seems disjointed. And it just seems to me that it, it may have been a better approach from the get-go to include and make sure that these uh, protected major transit station areas are dealt with comprehensively and as one rather than divide them. With recent events, uh, associated with the province, um, considering and putting region official plans on hold, urban boundary expansions and things being called into question. From my perspective, it just seems that there's even a greater need than ever to make sure that we plan for these protected major transit station areas carefully to ensure that we do not squander finite resources, which is the land component itself and that we make sure that we efficiently utilize infrastructure that, uh, we've all invested in. However, rather than come before you today to request an adjournment of O P A eighteen point six, I'm here today to seek, uh, I'm hoping what will be seen as a compromise that allows the matter to proceed rather than adjourned. This deputation and my letter of October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three is to request that council direct staff to revise O P A eighteen point six in order that the height and density on my clients' lands together with the details of the Elizabeth Street Extension can be deferred and established through future site-specific planning application process. I believe this approach is reasonable. It does not prejudice the future outcome of the land use permissions and will ensure that all aspects of the development are properly canvassed together with community consultation. If you're following along, um, the, I've requested through my letter that recommendation B to the staff report be amended to include four modifications to O P A eighteen point six, which are found about halfway down page two of my October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three letter. Um, and for those following along, those are numbered as one to four. The first deals with provide an exception to schedule one, uh, or sorry, schedule E one density and the bold text is intended to allow maximum site density to be established through again, site-specific applications. Number two is similar, uh, to the first and it main, but it maintains the minimum proposed density. But again, allows the maximum density provisions to, uh, proceed through, uh, site-specific planning. Third, maintains the minimum height proposed, but also allows the maximum building and maximum building base heights to be established through a subsequent planning process. And four really is intended to allow the details for that Elizabeth Street Extension that, uh, that Harry Herak had alluded to, to be established through a site-specific planning process. Our concern with that primarily is that, uh, it requires currently in the official plan, two sidewalks. We believe that conflicts with what has been approved to the north. And we do not believe that the right-of-way to the north contains sufficient right-of-way width to even accommodate two sidewalks. Um, my letter, uh, goes into more detail as to why we think this is more appropriate, but I do believe that I'm, uh, uh, that I'm likely out of time and, uh, I think we just request that if, if the committee and council, uh, we'd request that they would consider our proposed modifications because I think it's an appropriate compromise that allows us all to move forward. And we will continue to work with the city.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for wrapping up. I was lenient with all the delegates. I want in, in in fairness, we, we normally stick close to that five-minute mark. But, uh, we have your correspondence and it, it's all articulated very well in the, in, in your letter. So, uh, that concludes, oh, I'm sorry, my, uh, we have one, one more delegation from Jennifer Stark at twenty-seven Victoria Street.
Hello.
Miss Stark? Yeah, there you are.
Hi, yeah. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here representing Daryl and Teresa Davis. We have the property at forty-seven Church Streets North, which is the first property south of Dunlop Street on the east side of Church. Um, I just wanted to let you know that I concur with everything that Mr. Layton presented. And we're just concerned that our property is included with the Crosby B R T Station area in the region official plan, but it has not been included in this O P A. And our request to you would be just that our property be included with this O P A on the schedules to be consistent with the York Region, um, Transit Station area. That's really all.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Ms. Stark. Uh, thank you for mentioning that. And certainly as a real, as a result of the two delegations, our, our staff will be explaining, uh, the rationale um, regarding the seeming contradiction between our proposed Village Local Center and uh, the regional designated M T S A. So stay tuned for when we get to item eleven point five. And that concludes our delegations. With, with thanks to all the delegates, uh, we, we move to our regular agenda. We have, uh, items eleven, one, two, three, four, five, and six pulled and eleven point one was pulled, I believe, by Counselor Tree, uh, Counselor Silvert. Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just give me one moment. I need to just access an extremely heavy file. Okay. Um, I'd like to bring forward the recommendations um, stated on pages seven and eight, consecutive pages four twenty-six and four twenty-seven of our, of our agendas, agenda item eleven point one, quest for direction, official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment applications, nine two one eight Young Street. Um, this has been an object of much, much discussion throughout multiple terms of councils, including my three. Um, I fully accept and, um, support the recommendations made by staff, and I'm going to read them into the record. A, that the Ontario Land Tribunal, this matter is before the O L T, he advised that council does not support the official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment applications submitted by nine two one eight Young Street for lands known as part of lots two eight three, two eight four, two eight five, and two eight six with, um, municipal address of nine two one eight Young Street. We're talking about the, um, the piece of land that is on the south, the immediate southwest corner of Young and Carville. Um, that appropriate city staff be directed to appear at the, uh, Ontario Land Tribunal in support of council's position concerning the subject land applications and C that city staff be directed. Continue discussions with the applicant towards resolution of the outstanding appeals and the submission of a revised development proposal that is supportable and represents good planning. I completely concur with all of that verbiage and I would urge, uh, this developer to please continue your discussions with our staff to ensure that we can come forward with, as they say, a revised development proposal that is supportable by this council and represents good planning. Um, I, I don't have much else to say. I, I leave this in the capable hands of our staff and, um, and our legal staff before the O L T. Um, but, uh, just, just to, just to say one more time because I'm very firm on this, that I absolutely unequivocally accept the recommendations of staff. Thank you very much. And I will move the recommendations.
Thank you very much, Counselor. So we have the staff recommendations on the floor. There any, any other discussion? On item eleven one, and you were right originally, it could have gone under consent. Uh, Deputy Mayor Chan?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I'm in support of, um, the, uh, local council motion. Uh, having said that, um, I, I, I want to emphasize, I think that Mufer also mentioned. I hope the applicant, uh, now you're seeing that, uh, also we actually are also discussing today, uh, next week on council, uh, O P A eighteen on five, uh, then there I strongly encourage applicant, uh, look at that, um, keeping that in mind that, um, come to, um, I would hope uh, 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 an, uh, opportunity to, uh, either withdraw, uh, certain up to them of the application or have, uh, mutually acceptable settlement, working with our staff and local council. Um, but at this point in time, um, and I, I honestly see there's opportunity for doing that. So, um, I hope that, um, if this motion gets passed today and next week, uh, applicant take note. Um, this is something that, uh, perhaps there'll be opportunity really uh, to work together, uh, in addressing the issues and concern. And in the, at the end of the day, um, like one of the delegates said earlier, uh, for the good people, for helping to address housing, a crisis we all know at this chart strategic corner intersection, but do it right. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. So I, I see no other comments. Um, I, I too, uh, support the staff recommendations here. Uh, as our proposed official plan amendment shows that there is deference given to the, to the very corner at, at Young and Sixteenth. there is deference given to the, to the very corner at at Young and Sixteenth on all four corners to be the um, the most dense uh for the densities to rise up to the corner. I think it's a very generous allotment of FSI that that's been proposed and discussed all along for this property and uh I am hopeful that our staff can um negotiate successfully with with the applicant for uh something that is more um in line with what we're proposing. And I'm always hopeful that uh the city and and an applicant is able to come together with a compromise that's best for the city and um, but I do, I do agree with uh um drawing a line here and 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 for for our staff and in light of the long history that there is at this site. I mean, um, it's, it's already been the subject of an OMB hearing and there was an allocation given much lower than what is uh currently being applied for and then um, I also support our, our staff's position that uh they will oppose this at the OMB. So I don't see any other comments or questions, so I'm going to call the vote on this staff recommendation. All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Very good. Okay, item eleven point two, this was pulled by councillor Tree. Oh, oh, sorry, councillor Thompson.
Um, thank you very much through you, the chair. Initially, I was not going to pull this item. I, I would have uh let this pass on consent. However, uh, since the agenda was posted, we received three letters of opposition. Um, and I believe that we need to provide a bit of clarification for those individuals who wrote those letters because it became very clear to me that the letters of opposition that they wrote were in regards to the previous submission, which was to cover numbers twenty-seven, twenty-nine and number thirty-one Anglin uh Drive. And that's not the case anymore. The uh, what has come before council here is basically a severance to just number twenty-seven Anglin Drive. Um, and quite, quite frankly, if it wasn't that we needed uh a zoning bylaw amendment uh in this particular case, I think this would have just gone to the Committee of Adjustment because this is a, a fairly straightforward severance. And the only reason why we have the zoning bylaw amendment is that the, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, it seems that we're still operating under a former township of Markham zoning bylaw, which is uh uh really no longer reflective of the neighborhood and that uh, you know, having the zoning bylaw amendment that will allow it, this to be uh more consistent with the and reflective of our neighborhood and pattern of development in the area certainly makes sense. So I full heart, wholeheartedly um uh endorse the recommendations made by staff and uh would move as such. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Okay, thank you, councillor. So you are very good. So we have a motion on the floor and uh councillor Davidson, you want to speak to that?
Thank you. I just have a question for staff through you, Mr. Chair. The original proposal was for lots twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one. We're only talking about one house on a, or sorry, a severance on twenty-seven. Are there currently severance applications for twenty-nine and thirty-one?
Here, Mr. Chair, I'm advised by staff, no, there are not.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh, motion on the floor is to adopt the recommendations by staff. Uh, any other speakers, comments, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, um, item eleven point three. Um, not somebody there, that's you. Okay, councillor Tree, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through Mr. To our staff. I just want to confirm about eleven point three regarding to this uh sixty, fifty-six, fifty-eight and also sixty Elizabeth Street South. As I can recall, the eighty-eight townhouse has been built up. And for the purpose of eleven point three, we just want to confirm from city, we will approve the existing building plan, right?
Through the chair to uh councillor Tree's comment. Uh, the build, the townhouses are currently under construction. So the application before us today is only to establish condominium tenure for that development.
Got it. Thank you so much. I don't have further questions for this eleven point three.
And you're moving the staff recommendation?
Yeah, I will move.
Okay, okay, so item eleven point three, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, so now we move to item eleven point four. Um, the, the OPA eighteen point five Young Carville Sixteenth Avenue Key Development Area. I'll, I'll go to councillor Sillett's award five councillor. Uh, this is in your board and I'm sure it's also in councillor Shu's ward. He'll, he'll weigh in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will move the staff recommendations for agenda item eleven point four on, on uh page one one nine, consecutive page uh four twenty-six. Of, and um, I want to thank staff for their remarkable work and notable work that they have done through many years regarding this particular KDA. As stated before in in many, many, many times, that this KDA that is situated at Young's uh Carville and Sixteenth is the second most, I would say, important um KDA that we have in Richmond Hill, being second to the Richmond Hill Center. I, I fully support uh the recommendations as I just, as my, one of my questions to Ms. Chu uh before state, uh, it's very clearly stated that um we are in compliance with the approved um um OP of York Region, which has been approved by the province. So we must, as the lower municipality, the second tier, be in compliance with that. And we are with what is in front of us. Are we happy? I know I'm not, but that's life. That's the way it is. We have in front of us um multiple uh provincial legislation legislative bills, one oh eight, one oh nine and twenty-three, which very clearly define what we must do, what we shall do. While I appreciate Mr. Doughty's comments, I, I do would like, I don't disagree with his comments. And yes, if only, if only we did leave, we could leave this to the people and it was a discussion and a decision that was made by two hundred and seven thousand people. Absolutely, but it's not. We are elected into these nine seats to make these very, very difficult decisions on behalf of those residents. Are we demuring to the developers? No, I don't believe we are. I believe we're demuring to a future vision, which is telescope to twenty fifty-one. And while we have to look at this and plan for this now in the now, in the current, I believe that it behooves us to always remember that this is a future vision planned into twenty fifty-one and quite frankly, beyond. Because as we move forward and through the decades, um, there will be other councils that sit here and other councils may make different decisions for different OPs. And we may see that those densities become even greater. So I, I believe what we have in front of us is not what we want, but what we do have to agree to. It's also very important to remember. And as everyone knows, I'll be the first one to stand up and shout about um any development that is too high or too dense. I think my reputation precedes me. But in this particular case, as with the Richmond Hill Center, we do not have a choice. And we must have something in place, which is our OPA and the submitted OPA amendments, this one in particular, that ensure that we concentrate development on the Young Street Corridor, which is the uh Regional Transit Corridor. And these four, for the, and the four corners of this particular KDA and what surrounds it. Very important. Every single one, to my knowledge, of the um applications that have thus come forward have all gone to the OLT. So that's something that everybody must remember. It's, it's critical. And as a council, as a city, we need to have in place a document that clearly, clearly states what our controls are. And those controls are what is inscribed, what will be eventually, hopefully, inscribed um in this particular OPA, OPA amendment. And that's, that's where we keep the control. Because should any of this, and I will go to a second round, should any of this go to the OLT? And I think we are probably assured that it will. We, as a city, we must have something in our possession that us as councillors and us as staff will be able to stand before the OLT and defend. I'll go to a second round. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Uh, I have a list now and and councillor Shu, you want, you can speak next then. Thank you for the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Um, before me, before me making comments on this, um, both, I would like to thank the staff to making such an comprehensive staff report. Uh, and I appreciate your effort and your team's effort on this. Before me making comment, I have a few questions. Um, does anyone on the staff have information on the timeline for extending the subway to Young and Caulfield and sixteen? Do you have any information when the subway will be there?
There, there's never a formal announcement or anything formal.
I just want to clarify if there's no time.
Passing mention by Metrolink.
Okay.
And it did just make sense now that we're above ground that it would continue along the rail.
Okay, so my second question is, is there a plan in place to widen Young Street, Sixteenth Avenue and Caulfield to accommodate this growth, growth in the future?
Mr. Kwan?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. No, there are no plans to widen Young Street at point.
Okay, clear. And I recall there's a development located at the, at the northeast corner of Young and sixteen. So that means are we accepting or receiving application for the building? Now, are we receiving? Yeah, so they can submit the application anytime, right?
There is one submitted and yes, Commissioner.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. The adoption of the plan does not preclude any landowner from filing an application for redevelopment. We have several on the books already, but certainly this, the adoption, predicted adoption of this uh, this plan by council uh will set the path and the vision coming forward so that we can receive future applications and presumably process in a, in a much quicker fashion, knowing that the policies are in place.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the logic here. If there's no defined timeline for the subway extension and no clear plan for the road widening and we are now receiving application for high rises, how can we manage a sharp increase in population? I'm not opposing development, just concerned about the timing. Are we ready for this development right now? This intersection is different from Young and Seven, Young and Highway Seven, because we don't know when the subway will reach Young and sixteen or Caulfield. If I was told that the development would happen in twenty years later, in thirty years later, that, that, that would make more sense. But now we are receiving application now at this moment. I'm just trying to figure out the logic here. I'm just simply questioning the timing. It seems like that we are not well prepared yet. That's my comment. And in addition, regarding to the job ratio on the staff report, which aims for a ratio of seven residents to three job opportunities, right? Am I correct? I hope I am. Uh, this is a commendable initiative. I admit, I appreciate that almost half of the resident could potentially work locally, which is ideal. However, my comment is, is crucial to understand how resident will fit in these job opportunities. What type of jobs are we talking about? What kind of businesses will be there? So my and and other comment is we need a higher level planning and a positioning of our city. If we can position our city effectively, maintain a high salary middle class, we can address one of the biggest challenges in our city. That means we are in the aging population now. That's one of the biggest challenges in our city. So we have to maintain a stable middle class to fit in the job opportunities, not only the slogan, work locally and not only a ratio, just a figure there, okay? We, we have to work further on how we fit the residents into this job opportunities. That what I'm thinking, not only a figure. And um, my another comment is regarding the staff report, page two, there's a statement is made as follows. The feedback received and the feedback received on OPA fifteen point five has generally been positive with there being support for the KDA. However, some concerns were raised regarding the heights and densities proposed in OPA. I, I don't understand. I, I won't say there's a bias, but I'm wondering about the wording the report is using. Has the staff conducted a comprehensive survey of the nearby resident that lead to the phrasing of this statement? I have no idea why this word is using. Why are this generally positive for this KDA? Just want to ask a question.
Commissioner?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, it's the, the comment in the executive summary is about the general nature of the comments that have been received through the various consultations, the feedback in writing, emails and any other forms of communication with the stakeholders, including the public. Um, it is further on in the staff report, of course. Starting on page five, it does summarize the comments received and how staff have addressed them and what adjustments we've made going forward uh towards the production of OPA eighteen point five. So while we say the word generally, of course, you know, to some, some comments, of course, are opposing each other. So there would be no satisfying two people or one, one of those two people or maybe neither, depending upon whatever conclusions staff came up with on the comment. But it is generally, uh, what we said is that we've listened to the public and the stakeholders and to the best of our ability have factored into their comments into the final document in front of you today.
Very clear. Uh, Mr. Chair, do we have second round? Yeah, so I will leave it to second round to wrap up my, oh my, thank you so much. This is all about here.
Very good. Councillor, you got two people that want to have a second round? Okay, uh, the next speaker is Mayor West. You, you got your hand up there. Go ahead, Mayor West.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, so thank you so much for all of the input that we've received so far on this and thank you to the staff for all the work that you've done in leading this for quite some time. Um, I'll, I'll start off by saying that um this plan for this area has been a long time coming. And I think, um, you know, regardless, uh, notwithstanding some of the comments that were made that were not in favor of the plan specifically or certain aspects of the plan. Um, I really do think that there is, uh, it, it's very important to have a plan. We've had many situations on this council over the last number of years that I've been on council where we were very hesitant to um approve anything on that site because it, there wasn't a whole plan that looked at the entire area as a whole and made sure that this, it in a, in a systems-integrated kind of way, that the whole uh potential development would function. Um, so I think that's definitely a positive thing. I also do appreciate, um, you know, some of the concerns that uh the, have been expressed here today. Uh, this plan, I'm sure is not perfect and and, but I think it's a good plan. Uh, no plan that I've ever seen, um, you know, uh, in my time on council. No plan that I've ever seen, you know, in my time on council has been perfect. But the official plan really guides development and it's a very important plan and I'm not downplaying any of that. But, you know, what ends up happening, ends up being the result of many, many, many different factors. It's the best job that we can come up with on how an area can potentially unfold and develop. But one of the things that I think is also very positive about this, and we haven't really talked about this a whole lot here today, is just the idea that in Richmond Hill, we really do have a housing issue. Affordability and supply are both problems that we're always grappling with. And I, I can certainly say I've spent many, 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 you know, sleepless nights worrying about this problem. And this area will contribute significantly to the amount of supply, but also the amount of affordability that we can offer to our residents. And I think that's a very important issue that maybe has not been fully vetted in this discussion. But I wanted to make sure that we, we talked about that. You know, we do have limits in our, in our, minimum limits in our, in our official plan that dictate how much affordable housing we are going to expect to see in a K D A. There was a talk a little bit about jobs and, and that's an important thing. I mean, we want to have as many jobs as we can. There's no question. And we are certainly working on that. But I guess when I look at that area, you know, right now, with all due respect, most of that K D A is right now is a parking lot. And, you know, a parking lot isn't providing any jobs. And I think, you know, it's important that, that we keep in mind that when we're redeveloping this area, there's going to be job opportunities, retail opportunities, services that people don't have right now that are going to be offered, that were not offered now. And I mean, yes, there may be some of the, the existing businesses there that will have to be, you know, reconfigured and so on. But it will be a place where people will need the services and need the, the opportunities for jobs, but also to receive the kinds of services and opportunities that you need as well. So I think there are some really positive aspects about this. I do appreciate that, that staff has worked on this for quite some time. And this plan has evolved in a way that, I mean, I'm not surprised with the, the final result. There, there's, it's been an iterative process. But the main structure of what we can expect in that area has remained pretty consistent over the last little while. So anyway, those would be my comments. I'm certainly happy to support the, the motion that I presume we have on the floor at this moment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mayor West. And we'll, we'll continue with the speakers list. But at this, at this point, I'm, I'm going to ask our vice chair, Deputy Mayor Godwin Chan, to, to take, to assume the chair as I have to leave for a minute.
Thank you, Regional Council Dipala. So I'm taking over as chair in my capacity, vice chair of this committee. Thank you, Mayor West, for your comments. And next on the speakers list is councillor Simon Tree. Councillor Tree, please.
Okay, thank you, Miss Chair. Through you, Miss Chair, and to the all the audience here. My first question also ask of staff as well regarding to the, the plan. F S I two point zero around Hillcrest Mall. As you mentioned before, you did a talk with the owner of this business and you confirm with them. We offered two point zero F S I to the business, but they rejected. So they say one point zero is good enough based on the current visibility's capacities, that's right?
Thank you, councillor Tree, for your question. Yes, we did speak with Oxford Properties, who owns Hillcrest Mall. And we spoke about the density redistribution. They did confirm that it, it is very hard in their business to, to increase the G F A in terms of commercial on Hillcrest Mall. But we have given them opportunity to actually increase it if they choose to because currently it's a, 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 around zero point five to zero point six F S I and we have increased it to one point zero for them.
So let me put that another way, switch it. So even we offer two point zero, from their perspective, there's no way they can reach to that number now, right? Even they want to try to create more job, but because space, whatever the reasons, not achievable.
They believe the market is very hard. It's very hard to achieve that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I don't feel a question for you, but I do have another numbers I want. Yeah, please take a seat. Okay, another one I want to mention here is I just look at our yearly summaries about the project we already proved or we are currently proposing. I want to call those numbers. For the Bernard K D A, we proved already, the average people over there is eleven thousand members. Second plan of Richmond Hill, we proved around fifty one thousand residents. Young and Sixteenth Street, this is the one, in scope is twenty three thousand residents. And the Young Village Corridor, which we discussed, around ten thousand residents. We approved around twelve thousand unit, about for, if you times three, right? Normally is one unit, just three person. There are sixty, thirty six thousand residents. If you sum up only those five projects, not others, okay? The people we are projecting only through those five projects is around one thousand, one hundred thirty thousand residents. If you sum up current population in Richmond Hill, two hundred twenty thousand people, plus three one zero thousands. So we projecting three one zero thousand residents for Richmond Hill, thus from this five project, okay? For thirty years of twenty twenty fifty one, York region's projection, the city of Richmond Hill has only three zero zero thousand. So we are projecting around thirty percent more than the regional projection. I'm just give this number based on my first estimations. We are projecting thirty percent more populations than the region's projections. And then question go back to us. Are we, are we planning too much or not? If this number is correct, then I would say, we already proved the secondary plan for the Richmond High, Richmond Hill, because subway extension, that's why it's proved to you. I don't want to go back. And for this Young and the Sixteenth Street, we also project another high number as well. I think this might be the second biggest population's projection, project here. So I want everybody here consider if we project thirty percent more, why this number cannot be reduced? That's my first round question. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. But you're not asking a question on that. Share your comment. Got it. Thank you very much. Next on my speakers list is councillor Thompson. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you very much. Through you, the chair. I would like to thank everyone who has participated and contributed to the development of this official plan amendment. Certainly staff collecting all this information and putting it in a, in a format that is that we can all understand. This is great. However, there is always some little pieces that aren't always fully understandable. And I, I picked up on that with, with Mr. Resnick's presentation. He was talking about the private roads. And in particular, he had mentioned how we use the word shall. So I know we use words like shall, should, and must. And I think it would be appropriate if we could just get a little bit of clarification, in particular for those private roads that he was talking about where the, the wording was shall. So if we could just get some clarification, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you for the question, councillor Thompson. Miss Xu?
Thank you, councillor Thompson, for your question. The language with regards to shall or should, shall does mean mandated. So we do require it. And with respect to the roads, we do require it because that center will see a significant amount of growth. And we do want to have smaller development blocks so that they're walkable, but also to have those streets so that they are connected. They connect with the four quadrants within the K D A, but also connect to the nearby neighborhoods, so the adjacent neighborhoods, so that they connect to the existing street network. And should, if we, if we say should, typically that means we, we would like to have those, those features. But, you know, sometimes through negotiations or through site, further site analysis, we realize it's not possible. And, and so then we try to, as much as we can, try to achieve what's, what's noted in the policies. But we do give some flexibility in order to, to work with the developer to get the best we can.
Thank you, Mister. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, thank you very much for that. And that's very beneficial. I think it's also helped us on the next agenda item as well. Those are all my questions and I certainly support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Next on the speakers list is councillor Davidson. Councillor Davidson, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I know that when Metrolinks was here, they talked about not having plans to expand a, to create a dual rail track for the GO coming from the Youngs, sorry, from the, yes, Highway Seven Station. So I, I'm worried that we are making huge decisions based on maybes. And I haven't seen any, anywhere that the subway is going to Sixteenth. I, I, based on some of the Metrolinks problems with the Eglington Line, which is almost four years late and still doesn't have a completion date. I guess my question to staff is, why do we have to make projections for thirty years? We're in such a volatile period. People aren't going to work as much as they are. They're working from home. We don't know if the subway, when it will come. We don't know what's happening with transportation. Why can't we do a tenure plan? Because we're in such a volatile period of transition. I mean, COVID honestly changed everything. And we're in a period of needing affordable housing, more housing, transit. Why do we have to go thirty years?
Thank you for your question, I, councillor. And I think Commissioner Quang has something to respond to.
Thank you for the question, councillor Davidson. Through you, Mr. Chair. The plan sets the vision for the city. And yes, it's a longer term vision. And will be reviewed incrementally in ten year, in over ten year increments. But I acknowledge the volatility of the world we live in now. But it's necessary in order for people to develop their own plans for the future, the landowners and how they want to build. For instance, the two major landowners here are plans that they are proposing are multi, multi, multi-year plan. So they need to understand what our vision is and then they can hopefully align with our vision and then develop their longer term plans to further their objectives. As far as Metrolinks and the future subway is concerned, I would suggest you, well, Metrolinks is on the circulation list of every development application. So if things start to change in their shop, they have a new objective or new plans or the timing of whatever vision they had is altered, they would certainly be part of the ongoing discussions of what would develop in and around the areas that may, they may see as necessary for further their vision for future extension of the subway.
Thank you.
Councillor?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I have other que, I, I'm so concerned for the people who already live here because if I, you know, we can say, well, you know, it's going to take years and maybe we won't see fifty five stories for a couple of decades, but maybe we will. And the problem with that is the availability of, of, of transportation and quality of life for whoever already lives there and whoever is going to move into the fifty five story building. So I, I, I'm so torn because I feel like this, looking into the future is one thing, but we, there, it's not phased. So as soon as we sign, we say this is the plan, it doesn't matter if it's twenty twenty four or twenty fifty, fifty five stories is on the table for that area. And I don't think we're ready. One of the letters indicated that there's a requirement for thirty five percent affordability and mentioned that it's actually should be five percent. Can someone please explain the affordability? How are we incorporating affordability moving forward into the official plan?
It's true.
Thank you, councillor Davidson, for your question. Our current official plan policy states that we require thirty five percent of new units in key development areas to be affordable. And so that means that when developers come forward with an application, thirty five percent of that project needs to be affordable. Your question about the five percent, that mainly pertains to the inclusionary zoning regime. According to Bill twenty three, which has changed the Planning Act, it has decreased the unit set aside for inclusionary zoning units, which is, which are affordable housing units, and they limit it to only five percent. Our thirty five percent, we are conforming to the region of York's official plan that states that all N T S As should have thirty five percent affordable housing. So we are, we're doing our part as the lower tier, conforming to the upper tier municipal O P.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So is thirty five percent enforceable moving forward? If the province says five percent or is it just hopeful?
It's true.
It's a good question, councillor Davidson. We don't enforce the thirty five percent. In the future, sometime next year, I believe we're going to have a council, not a council, sorry, an affordable housing education session where we'll talk more about affordable housing. It is a very difficult question because, as you might be aware, there was a, a decision that was made recently for Mississauga, which the O L T has shot down their secondary plans that would require affordable housing. I believe, I believe it was ten percent. So that sort of is something that other municipalities are looking at. Currently, we don't enforce our thirty five percent. We do have other incentive programs that we're working on to try to, you know, facilitate the development of affordable housing. We have more work to do through our affordable housing strategy, but those are ongoing work.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Can the infrastructure, like sewer lines and major, you know, wastewater? I, I'm talking about toilets flushing and it goes somewhere good. Are we prepared? Like, how is this massive explosion of development in key areas line up with the, what's under the ground in terms of, of sewers and, and, and sanitary sewer? You know, the big trunk lines and all that. What's? Let's say we find out there's not enough capacity. Where, where's the mechanisms for us to put the brakes on things?
Miss Xu? Oh, Commissioner, you want to address that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. All of these plans, of course, are vetted through the region of York and infrastructure planning is part of that review. As we also know, there are, there are constraints, there are finite limits to the York term servicing scheme, but those are constantly being monitored. And there are plans for the upgrades of that system, especially now that the province has ruled or dictated that, you know, the upper York system has been refused, which would have siphoned off a lot, literally, a lot of that sewage capacity into Lake Simcoe. So those plans are always under review and assessment. But certainly the region feels confident that we can achieve the objectives of the plan and service them appropriately.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councillor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So yes or no, can we put the brakes on something if we think the infrastructure is not up to it yet?
Sorry, Commissioner, I missed that part of the question, councillor. We, we, of course, we can put the brakes on something, but that, you know, we, we would have to deal with it at that particular moment if there wasn't service and capacity available. But certainly both the But certainly both the applicant and us are aware of what those capacity limits are and, uh, judgments we've made based upon the availability of service, servicing and the timing of those developments going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Back to you, Counselor.
And thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Well, I appreciate that we will have some control over that because there are, we know climate change is changing our, our ability to live as we have in the last hundred years. And there are definitely in the United States, stories of, of, um, new developments that have been refused hookup to main sewer lines and aren't getting proper water. So I, I really hope whatever we decide that we have the capacity, if it is not possible to go forward. Um, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, our Counselor Davidson. Now that, uh, Chair Dipala is back, uh, I would like to pass, uh, Chair back to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Chan. Okay, so, um, it's twelve thirty now. I've got three, three more speakers on a first round and two more on second. So, uh, we're looking at over half an hour to do this. And I imagine the next O P A will, will take some time too. So for the benefit of staff and, uh, um, committee members and the public, I think now is the appropriate time to, to break for lunch if, unless anyone, uh, on committee disagrees. I think we should stop now. We'll maybe an abbreviated lunch break till one fifteen, uh, for the benefit of those that have been waiting. Uh, and, and have been here since nine, since the start of the meeting. Uh, is that amenable to counselors? Any objections? So we'll break from now until one fifteen. It's a short lunch, but, uh, we'll, we'll get back at it at that time.